All right, I would like to call to order the May 8th Milford City Council meeting. Will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a word from our Chaplain, Brian Wykoff?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray together. Father, thank you so much for this evening. We're excited for those that are receiving awards at this annual Milford Police Department Awards Ceremony. But Father, also, we come with heavy hearts for Deputy Larry Henderson's family, and I just pray that you be with them during this time of tragic loss. Father, we know that life is full of different contrasts, good and bad, and just hard and easy, but this is a hard time, and so I pray that you be with that family, be with us as a community. Pray that you bless the meeting tonight in a very special way. We ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Brian. Jackie, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
All right, we get to start off with one of our favorite things, and that is the Annual Police Award. Chief Mills.
It's an honor and a pleasure to present the annual awards. One of my favorite quotes, as you've probably heard me say before, is, "If you do this job properly, there is nothing nobler you will do with your life." Tonight, we're recognizing people who serve properly. Each of tonight's recipients were nominated by their peers and selected by the awards committee. Tonight's recipients serve in a variety of capacities, but the one thing they have in common is they are all ambassadors, and I am proud to serve with them. If I could have Officers Williams and Stags, please come forward. The first award of the night is the Chief's Commendation, which is issued for outstanding performance that demonstrates the core values of integrity, professionalism, cooperation, and commitment. On February 6th, Officers Tanner Williams and Matt Stags were dispatched to a fire with a resident trapped inside. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to recount the many details from that fateful night, but I will say these men performed courageously. Officers Williams and Stags will never forget what they experienced at that scene, but they deserve to be proud of their actions. They are true professionals, and I am proud to issue them a Chief's Commendation Medal. If you guys like to say a word, you can. You don't have to. If I could have Police Volunteers Shelby Labons and Steve Greger join me at the podium, The Civilian Service Certificate can be awarded to a citizen who provides outstanding service to the police department or the community. After graduating from the 2022 Citizens Police Academy, Shelby began volunteering her services as a photographer at our annual Citizens Police Academies and other special events. In addition to her photography skills, she's an exceptional baker who makes it hard for us to fit in our uniforms. Just today, she dropped off some muffins for me that she made keto just for me, and also signed up for another special event happening in June. So she is very passionate about serving her community, and it's an honor for me to issue her the Civilian Service Certificate. Shelby and, you'll hear in a moment, Steve are volunteer photographers, but they weren't available tonight. But fortunately, a round of applause for Jeff, Shelby's dad, who was pinch hitting for us tonight. I first met Steve in 1984 when my parents signed me up for his nonprofit karate lessons. Years later, life took us in different directions, but we reconnected in the early 2000s when I was working as a police detective and he was with the FBI. Steve retired in 2008, and a few years later, when I was appointed chief, he reached out and volunteered his expertise in processing crime scenes. Over the years, he's trained several members of the department and donated crime scene processing equipment. And in coming full circle, he also volunteers at my nonprofit karate program now. For those reasons and many more, I'm excited to issue him the Civilian Service Certificate. Either of you like to say a few words?
Come on, Shelby.
I just want, I'm too short. I just want to say thank you to the City of Milford and the Police Department. They make it extremely easy to support, and I look forward to keep, to continue supporting them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelby. I've been served for over 39 years in law enforcement. I've worked with many agencies. In his council, the members that are here, the citizens of Milford, I need to be extremely proud of your department. They go above and beyond, and I want to thank you.
Before I forget, I'd like to recognize a couple of past recipients. Officer Eschman has received awards here before. Officer Mike Green, who's in the back, has been a recipient here. Chaplain Wykoff has been up here during the annual awards ceremony, so I'd like to recognize those, and also the officers that are attending tonight, showing their support. Next, I'd like to have Officer Paul... The Silver Bullet may be awarded to any member of the department who demonstrates exemplary problem solving. The recipient of the Silver Bullet is encumbered with the responsibility of identifying the next recipient. The Silver Bullet will never be permanently issued and will pass through the hands of active members indefinitely. Last year's recipient, Officer Chris Mel, has selected Detective Paul Lane to be the next recipient based upon his work helping relocate homeless people with a balanced approach of identity, combined with a multidisciplinary team of social workers and prosecutors that he assembled, is absolutely commendable, and it's my pleasure to issue the Silver Bullet
Just thank you to City Council, my coworkers. I've been here since 1999. I've enjoyed my career here, and I look forward to staying as a volunteer, so thank you.
In addition to tonight's recipients, I'd like to point out that later this month, Detective Brown will receive an Excellence in Police Service Award from the Claremont County Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also proud to report that in 2024, we received 29 official compliments from the public compared to just two complaints. As you know, I'm consistently impressed with the hard work and dedication of my staff and proud to be part of the team.
Thank you, Chief Mills. And those of you that were here for the awards, sneak out whenever. You need to.
And there goes our crowd.
There goes the crowd. There's free food in the hallway, I saw, so. I know. Every time. Libby, you have to stay. You have to stay. All right, I will move on to our next presentation. Andrea Brady from the Milford, Miami Township Chamber of Commerce is going to make a presentation. Welcome.
I would not take all those people leaving right before your presentation personally at all.
I'm taking it very personally. For having me here today. I am, I'm here to tell you about a project that the Chamber is working on. It is a canoe art project, and we're very excited to talk to you about it because we are hoping to start it at Frontier Days in just a couple weeks. So as you likely know, 2026 is America's semi-quintcentennial, 250th birthday, and there are efforts going on in all the states to celebrate our beautiful, public mural project that we are working on with you. The Chamber is leading a canoe art project designed to bring additional unique art pieces to the area. This project is the same idea as the Cincinnati Pigs that were done a few decades ago, but we're using canoes to celebrate the importance of our local rivers in the development of our area. We plan to use real canoes and then possibly some cutouts in the shape of canoes, have them painted by local artists or community members, and then mounted and displayed publicly. Our goal is to have 10 to 12 painted canoes mounted throughout the Milford, Miami Township area. We had spoken with the former city manager last year, and he indicated he was willing to look at some locations within the city. We've had some preliminary discussions with Mr. Gunderson, and so we've been talking about possibilities there. The goal of this project is not just to celebrate our area, but also to enhance it for our residents and businesses, as well as to draw people here to see these unique art pieces, and then ideally, of course, to stay and enjoy all the restaurants and shops that we have to offer. Cory Schultz, whom I'm sure you all know, a very talented local artist and a member of the Chamber, is going to be leading this effort from an artistic standpoint. He will serve as the lead artist, painting some of the canoes and coordinating any other artists who are painting other canoes. He would have unfortunately had to work. Some of the canoes will be funded via sponsorships, where a business or organization or an individual can purchase a canoe, choose their artist, and have a plaque memorializing their sponsorship at the canoe's location. But we are also looking to create truly public art canoes, those painted by our community itself, and this is where Frontier Days comes in. We will have one to two canoes at the festival itself, and community members can come and paint a section of those canoes. We will then hopefully mount these in the city. We'd love to find a spot at Riverside if possible, but, you know, somewhere that makes sense for the city and for the canoes. Cory also has some very, very fun ideas for our student artists that we'll be fleshing out soon. The painted canoes will be mounted by JKV Engineering. They're a local and very high-quality company. We can be sure that the canoes will be mounted properly and will last. Once we have the project under construction, we're getting a website with the canoes posted, kind of like a trail, so people can see where they are and go visit all of them. We'll also be working with the CVB to coordinate with the mural project and identify other opportunities to get the word out about the canoes. So that's a very brief overview. Do you have any questions, concerns?
Questions from council? I think it sounds like a great idea.
Sounds like a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, great community. Great way to get people involved in the community.
If people are interested, just reach out to the Chamber.
Yes, we are, we're trying to determine how soon, how far in advance of Frontier Days we're going to start publicizing. We just need to make sure a couple of things are ready to go before we put that out publicly. We may actually schedule some slots, some painting slots beforehand, but we, the goal is to have a tent there, to have the canoes there. You can come in and pick your spot and paint right there.
Great idea, yeah. Love it. Thank you.
So I hope I see all of you guys down there painting a spot on the canoe. We can have a Milford City.
You don't want to see my painting.
We'll make sure it's signed with legible letters. Lisa Evans.
Is there something?
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the council meeting proceedings from April 15th?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Next is financial statements. Do I have a motion to adopt the March 2025 Finance Report?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
No.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
That takes us to correspondence. Jackie, do we have some correspondence?
Yes, Mayor, we have correspondence from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. It's a permit TRFO to JDK Quaker LLC doing business as Quaker Steak &amp; Lube at 590 Chamber Drive and Patio, Milford, Ohio 45150. Do we want to have a hearing or not have a hearing?
I'll gladly make the motion to do nothing.
Second.
It's my favorite motion, by the way.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
That takes us to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to make a comment? I think they all left. All right, seeing none, that takes us to Mr. Gunderson and the city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. To start the report, I wanted to give an update on the utility rate study. Staff conducted the first meeting last week with Raptilis, which is our utility rate consultant. Based off of the discussion, we are going to... Based off of the discussion, we are going to start moving pretty quickly. They'll be sending over a request for information, and the goal is to have a recommendation by July of 2025. So that'll be simply a recommendation. They'll come to council, provide a presentation as to how they arrived at the numbers that they are recommending, and then we can decide what the next steps are from there. So, we're making way on that. Let's see here. I attended the Fourth Annual Claremont County Chamber of Commerce Legislative Reception. That was an excellent event to sort of network and engage with some of our political people within the county, and it was a good introduction for myself to a lot of people throughout the county. The next thing I wanted to discuss, and this is something that will be in our committee of the whole, but after several month selection process that included interviews, proposal refinement, and internal needs analysis, the city did, the city, me, and myself is going to provide a recommendation to council for a new IT consultant. We conducted seriously with three different people, three different companies, rather, all three different sizes, different interactions with local governments, and ultimately, we found that ROI Technologies, not only is a local company, but I know Aaron is in the audience there, and I won't expect him to come up here and give a speech, but certainly he's got a lot of passion and a lot of knowledge, and it's something that we felt would be an excellent addition to the team and will be hugely helpful as we look to accomplish some future technology needs. So, that'll be on the committee of the whole agenda. Lastly, I wanted to, actually two things, my apologies. I met with Duke Energy to discuss bearing the electric in on Main Street, as well as the relocation of the substation on High Street. It was really an introduction, sort of meeting, a preliminary meeting. Both of these topics have been brought up previously, but have sort of fallen to the wayside, so we're looking to get up-to-date numbers, figure out the logistics of everything, and we will establish a plan from there. So, more to come on that. And then lastly, five points irrigation. We will be requesting proposals. I can promise you, it'll be out by Monday, the 12th, as well as we will be posting the job for the finance director, city finance director. So we'll be posting that job by Monday as well. Other than that, I have nothing else unless there's any questions.
All right, seeing none, that takes us to the police report. Chief Mills, you're back up again.
I'll be a little briefer this time. You have my April monthly report. I'll touch on some of the highlights. During the month of April, we hosted our annual Sergeant's in-service training. We also hosted a three-day Advanced Roadside Impaired Driver, it's called A-Ride, course at the Wyler Training Center, which allowed us to send Officers Newmeyer, Mattson, Christian, and Ferguson at no cost and really no travel. Officers Hodges and Clark attended an OPADA, that's Ohio Peace Officer Training Academy Rifle Instructor Course. And I wanted to point out, as a member of the Ohio Small Police Department Association, one of those, in this case Officer Hodges, was permitted to audit the course, which meant he didn't have to, we didn't have to pay for his seat. That was a savings of $650. Officers Ferguson and Madison also attended 40 hours of crisis intervention training that's funded through the Aderson Society Behavioral Health. And Detective Brown attended a five-day training on advanced investigations. As you can see, we're still experiencing auto thefts and scams. I've reported on some of these scams. Here's one that's a little more unusual, but we have seen it in the past. A resident reported she was scammed out of $1,200 over Facebook Marketplace when she attempted to purchase a home after viewing it in person. She gave the deposit and was later notified that the online seller did not actually own the property, and she was scammed out of the deposit. Some community relations items. We had a great time at the WHAM Awards last month. I spoke at the St. Andrew Civil War Commemoration. Squad Four assisted with providing a Girl Scouts troop tour of the station. Officer Eschman received feedback that the children had a blast on their tour with her. I also hosted a Cub Scout tour of the station. Officer Eschman visited her senior visit five times this month. She reported she had lunch with him outside of work as well. Officer Kenny represented our honor guard at the Salute to Leaders event at the Oasis, and also staffed a motorcycle safety booth at Quaker Steak &amp; Lube Bike Night in partnership with the Claremont County Mental Health and Recovery Board. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, we placed the 988 crisis hotline on all of our marked units. Squad One escorted the Easter Bunny to Riverside Park, and I believe the mayor as well. And you may have noticed on Facebook, Texas Roadhouse dropped MS rolls and cinnamon. All in all, a pretty good month. Any questions?
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That takes us to Fire and EMS. District Chief Nickel.
Hi, James.
Hey, good evening. So the last couple of months, there's been a fire safety inspector class being taught at our station. The chief there has been teaching, so that wrapped up this week. We had several of our members, as well as about 12 other members of different Claremont County Fire Departments, so, you know, kudos to them. They all did a very good job. Firefighter paramedics Anthony Smith and Alex Baird graduated from the Leadership Academy class today. That's a year-long class taught by Dr. Brian Crandall, who's a nationally-known instructor, along with several other of his personnel that come in out of town to teach his class. So it's like a year long, and they get to it several times. So it's kind of a big deal, and so we've all. And also tomorrow, District Chiefs Nick Theo and Miles Miller will be graduating from the Ohio Fire Executive Program, which is a two-and-a-half-year program that they've had to attend. Numerous reports, a lot of homework, so congratulations to them.
Nice.
I have nothing else. Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to council comments. Anyone from council like to make a comment?
Just a, well, reminder, but Farmer's Market is starting May 24th, Memorial Day weekend. They're still taking vendors, it's on the website, and the Memorial Day Parade is on Monday, May 26th, 9:30, the usual time, as it always has been.
And then is the storytime that the library's doing that same weekend in May?
It starts May something 20, something.
I'm not sure what the date is on that one.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, it's on the website.
Something new. I was really excited to see that they're going to have storytime at the park. That's awesome.
Any other council comments?
Yeah, a couple. Last week, and thank you to our city manager for attending some of the JED meetings that we couldn't have, but last week we had our annual JED meetings or board meetings. Each JED requires its own separate meeting, so it's a lot of redundancy. But, long story, the one, the TQL one is obviously the most successful JED that we have, and we've actually capped out on that, but still doing well. But one interesting thing that they brought up, and I'll talk about later on, is instituting a virtual policy, so that if, not something that we would do on a regular basis, but to have a policy that if we need to have an emergency meeting or something along that time, if we had a policy in place, we could do a virtual meeting on a need-be basis. Again, I would hope that we would never do that on a regular basis, but just, you know, to have a policy so that we could institute. Recently, they changed the state statute that you're allowed to do that now, so it's something that we should definitely consider and look at. And then I do applaud the city and Benjamin and his staff, their social media of the State Route 28, but is there any other additional information that we can share? I don't want to put you on the spot. I know it's been Groundhog Day there over and over, but, yeah.
Yeah, so from start to finish, without getting too deep in the weeds, what really started this was a water line break. Once we fixed the water line, it was determined that the sewer line was in bad shape. Once we dug down in the sewer line, we actually, the pipe was so corroded that we couldn't find anything. So we've had to go basically 369 feet from manhole to manhole to replace the sewer line. So as we are working through that process, we've had water line breaks, we've had gas line leaks, we've had semis take out the guardrail, we've had traffic issues. So certainly, it's something that, although we appreciate everyone's patience and we fully recognize, this is something that we are in no way trying to prolong. Due to the significant issues that we've incurred or encountered, not only are we going to replace the sewer line 360 feet, but we also have to replace the water line, and that's just something that it's dug up, and it makes sense to do it all at once. Now, the whole water line will not be replaced, but a good portion of it will be. So, we suspect that the road will be shut down through probably the middle to the end of next week. The accessibility to the businesses will certainly remain open, and hopefully all goes as planned, and it's sunny, and we have no further issues. So, once again, we appreciate everyone's patience, and we apologize for the inconvenience, and we will do our part to make sure this goes as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, that takes us to our Committee of the Whole meeting. So I'd like to call to order the Milford City Council Committee of the Whole meeting for Thursday, May 8th. Jackie, will you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Parrish?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
I'm sorry, Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes, here.
And first is public comments. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment? All right, seeing none, that takes us to our items on the list. I'll turn it over to Mr. Gunderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And back to the water line, or sewer line, I do want to give a shout-out to everyone that, all of our departments, in some form or fashion, they've stepped up, they've worked multiple 12-hour days through the rain, and I've been on site, although I've probably done far more talking than I have been helpful, but, in terms of helping, but I truly want to give them a shout-out because they've been phenomenal. It's times like this in which you realize how great of a team we really have, and I did want to give them a shout-out because it's been truly impressive, and I'm super proud of them, and even the police department stepped up and made sure that, you know, we're staying in line, and the fire department's been helpful. Jimmy still provides a smile whenever I tell a bad joke, so that goes a long way, too. So, all right, so moving into the agenda for Committee of the Whole, the first item is our property and casualty insurance. This is a yearly renewal. The only difference between this year and last year, we've had to adjust a few items as it relates to equipment replacement, and we've had to make some changes in terms of the policy, but ultimately, the policy went up about 5.5%. So this was something that we were pretty happy with and we were comfortable moving forward with for this year. So, I am seeking an ordinance to approve the agreement for the property and casualty insurance.
What is the, is there, is there somewhere buried in here?
It should be page two.
Yeah, the 102,000?
Correct.
Can you say that's what, a 5%?
About 5.5%.
Understood.
And I know that, I even recall last year, although not here, but a different municipality, they were seeing an average of an 8% increase. I think they said a similar type thing. They really shopped around for this, and they came up with 5.5%. So, we appreciated that rather than 8%.
This is our existing, we're not changing company. This is our existing.
Correct, correct.
I would make the recommendation that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing an agreement with McGowan governmental underwriters for property and casualty insurance for the city of Milford.
Second.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. If I can have Chief Mills come up and do this next one for the 911 plan, Hamilton County one. Sorry to put you on the spot. I was forgetting that this was on the agenda. Thank you. We just give a, just a highlight of what it is?
Really not that familiar with it, and I apologize.
Oh, okay.
The 911 Program Review Committee was formed pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 128.06. The committee then formulated a 911 final plan pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 128.07. Included in this correspondence is the 911 final plan for the Hamilton County that was approved by the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners on April 10, 2025. As directed by Ohio Revised Code, each municipality must act to approve or disapprove the final plan. Includes below is a draft resolution language for your consideration to approve the final Hamilton County 911 plan as required under Ohio Revised Code. The Hamilton County Board of Commissioners formally approved the plan on April 10th, and the resolution allows our jurisdiction to officially endorse the plan in compliance with the statutory framework.
I would make a recommendation for a resolution to approve the final Hamilton County plan pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter 128.
Second.
Thanks, Chief.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Quick on its feet. Thank you, Chief. All righty, next item is a resolution in support of applying for fiscal year 2025 Housing Technical Assistant Program. This is a program that came out here recently that'll, and really what I would like to do is I'd like to take advantage of this for a strategic plan. This is something that I've brought up previously as I think would be a benefit to us to target certain areas, whether it's the downtown, the Parkway, Main Elila, and really identify from an economic development standpoint what that looks like and how we can better facilitate development along those corridors. So what this program would allow us to do is, it would give us grant money for a proposal. Although I do not have the proposal before you, I do have one that I would like to recommend, and it's in the ballpark of between 30,000 and 40,000, which is pretty reasonable for a proposal like that. Certainly what I would do after that is I would look to sort of compound that into a comprehensive plan, and we could look at sort of the city as a whole, whether it's parks, planning, zoning, economic development, residential areas, whatever we decide to add into that plan. So, what this would allow us to do is to submit for a grant to cover the costs related to a strategic plan. Based off of my understanding, it's first come, first served, and I believe it's a million dollars that they hand out, and I think this is about a week old, so council allows me to submit, then I will be quick and prompt.
And just so, ROI would be pretty much that it would cover our costs, more than cover our cost.
Yeah, so the grant itself, I would apply for 100% of the cost, correct? Correct.
I would recommend then that the law director, I'm sorry, I would recommend a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply to the Ohio Department of Development for grants for, from the fiscal year 2025 Housing Technical Assistance Program.
Second.
And just so I'm clear, that's at a cost of $30,000, roughly, right?
If you can make a motion not to exceed 40,000, or a resolution not to exceed 40,000, I presume, I don't recall seeing an amount in there.
Neither did I, that's what I'm asking.
So maybe we just leave that out, and you're just allowing me to submit for it. So if we can just leave the amount out.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Thank you. Fingers crossed. All righty, moving on. As I mentioned in my staff report, the city conducted a several-month-long review process to look at our internal IT needs. We've had several stakeholders. We had Chief Mills, we had Assistant Chief Mahan, Sean, myself, I'm not sure if there was anyone else involved, but we've had several conversations, reviewing proposals, looking at truly what our needs are internally, looking at what companies would better suit our needs, and I think this was probably a two- or three-month review. And ultimately, what we established was ROI Technologies, both Aaron and Tammy, extremely passionate, extremely knowledgeable, they were very responsive, and based off of what our expectations and needs are, they met those to a T. So, my recommendation to council is to allow them to engage with ROI Technologies on a monthly basis. They would not exceed my spending limit, however, on a year contract, they would. And I truly believe that this is in our best interest and would better suit us as we move forward and address some of our IT needs. us as we move forward and address some of our IT needs. And I do have Aaron in the audience, although I, once again, I don't expect him to give a speech. He is smiling and if there's any questions, perhaps he can answer.
The agreement that we're talking about tonight, the the initial terms, what, three years?
Correct.
And then, and Aaron, do you mind coming up to the podium just, yeah, the, is that a fixed cost for over three years? Is there a built-in increase each year?
No.
Okay. That's very generous. Yeah. For those of you who don't know, you tell us, you're located right here in Miami Township, correct? You're local?
On Del Street, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you live here, but I mean, your your business is located?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, up in the township.
We actually work out of that house.
And then what other municipalities do you work with?
We work with Anderson Township.
Okay.
We've served Anderson Township for over 20 years.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Unless anybody else has any other questions, I would make a recommendation that the law director draft an ordinance with ROI Technologies to provide IT consultant services to the city of Milford.
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
All righty, moving on. Next on the agenda is guest golf carts updated proposal. Last meeting, we we had discussed this to to some extent. We we looked at two different proposals, both that sort of mirrored each other, but certainly had a a far bigger cost, had a three-year contract, and we ultimately decided that perhaps that wasn't in our best interest. After the meeting, I I had the guest golf carts reach out to me and they said, we're, we don't want to give up. Let's figure out a way to make this work. We think that Milford would be an excellent community for us to provide our service. So after a few discussions, you know, I I I told them, I said, look, we're we're going to have to, you know, get really creative here because I think council was pretty clear as the direction they were they were wanting to go. So we we came up with a with an updated proposal that I want council to consider. So the 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 difference now is it's it's going to be a one-year, one-year contract. I don't own the golf carts. Anything other than simply the surf. Please, would would be on the company themselves. The difference is, is the the cost is significantly reduced. The total cost of the program is is going to be 90,000. However, what we have looked at doing is we we've tried to leverage the marketing dollars and we said, you know, to me, I I don't find value in keeping the marketing dollars. What I want is I want a true cost, I want to reduce the cost, and I want a fixed cost. So what we looked at was if if we were to sell marketing for the golf carts at $20,000 apiece, we can reduce it down to 30,000. So the total cost would be 30,000 contingent on us selling the marketing. So the only the only true effort that we have with the marketing is to connect them with businesses. And in the event we do not sell the marketing, then we would be on the hook for the remaining amount. So if it's a dollar, we have a dollar. If it's 20,000, we have 20,000. So I know that Mr. Price has reached out to the HMA group and they provided some feedback. I I have sat down with a handful of businesses and threw it out there just as a feeler more than anything. Of course, I didn't ask for any commitments because nothing has been official as it relates to this, but I really want council to look at this and and figure out if if this is a better proposal for us. You know, I I said this from the start, to me, the the whole objective behind this is not only to reduce parking on on Main Street and the surrounding areas, but to me, it's it's providing accessibility accessibility for residents and for visitors. And to me, if we provide accessibility, there's a greater chance for people to stay. There's a greater chance for people to potentially go from shop to shop. I fully recognize, just thinks about it. That's all I ask. I I know that the the hours, those can be adjusted, the territory can be adjusted. So we have flexibility there, but this this is a new proposal and I guess I'll turn it over to council to see if there's any thoughts, questions, comments. If there's any further explanation that I need to give, let me know.
So my first question is about the 60,000. So it's not they're selling those, right? So we have to do the legwork on the 60,000. And then if we don't sell that much, the 30,000 that is listed as the cost here goes up by whatever amount we don't sell. Is that correct?
So I would say it's a hybrid approach. We, as the city of Milford, are not necessarily selling the advertising. We're more of a connector. We're connecting them and and helping find businesses or I guess you could say individuals that are interested in sponsoring. But yes, if if we did not sell the full amount in advertising or the full amount of advertising was not sold, then yes, we would be on the hook for that.
Well, and then the other thing that you just said, that brings another question. If we're playing connector, let's say that we're really bad at being a connector and we don't connect anyone. Are they doing any legwork at all to try to make up that 60 grand or are you didn't sell it?
So I I know that this is a a joint effort. Guests is they're they're in other municipalities to really bigger cities, so they're used to, you know, selling the advertising. And the amount itself, that that's something that they've used in other cities. So that's how they came up with that. The the great thing about that amount is it doesn't have to be just one business. It can be five, it could be 10. You you could do whatever gets to that amount. So there there is flexibility there, which is what I like.
Are we providing the names of the businesses and they're contacting them?
Yeah, correct. All all we're simply doing is providing that contact information. So I I'm I'm not going to be doing any cold calls. Now, if there's businesses that I feel like I would enjoy making a a relationship or starting a relationship with, then that might be something that I I reach out to them and say, hey, can we sit down and, you know, I want I want to introduce myself and and maybe this is something we throw out there, then that could be something I do. But I am not personally going to call the businesses. It'll be the company.
The only other kind of concern slash question, and this is one that I brought up the last time, is I would like to look and see what the capabilities of these carts are because living in a neighborhood up off of 131, the way that this program currently exists, my neighbors and I cannot take advantage of this without first driving and parking somewhere anyway, which kind of defeats the whole purpose if we're trying to eliminate parking downtown, right? So, you know, with that being said, I mean, I'll kind of defer to my colleagues here. I I'm I'm kind of with the will of council here, but those are my concerns. And living up off the hill, even if this pilot program works, I want the city to look into a way to make it available to everyone, not just the people that live down here in the at the bottom of the, you know, down in in older Milford.
I don't see this citizens as more as a benefit to the people who are coming to our city, parking elsewhere. My angst here has more to do with the 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 dollars. Again, whatever that value that potentially these cars can have, at this, we're on the hook for $90,000. And that's well above my threshold. I've shared that with with our city manager. So if you asked me today, this, I would be a hard no from the standpoint is we don't have any commitments. We don't have any, if we sign this contract, my understanding, we're on for $90,000, hoping, anticipating, maybe getting sponsorship money. And I'm I just think that at this point with the fact that it, I know the hours can be adjusted, but these hours really benefit the restaurants. And I would like to explore the next topic first with the parking of generating the revenue and hopefully turning over some of those parking spaces. And then potentially, this may or may not be needed, in my opinion.
Brad, what did other business owners, what were their thoughts in your discussions with them?
Probably more questions than anything. Hours, you know, and I explained that they can be flexible and changed. It was mixed. I mean, some people felt like it was would be beneficial and others didn't see the point in it.
Okay, I was curious.
I think hours-wise, it does benefit restaurants, but I think that's partly because, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon, parking isn't as big of an issue. So there are parking spaces open. So the evening hours is when it's usually more congested, parking spots aren't open.
Well, I get that, but then it strictly benefits the restaurants, not the not the restaurants.
Well, but I think it also, my my hope has always been it would it would be, you know, something unique for Milford. So it might bring people to town that otherwise wouldn't come here. You know, oh, if we can go there, we can we can ride the cart and not have to worry about parking. And so that might benefit businesses because, you know, they're new to Milford. They're coming here, they're seeing our stores and our shops and they might come back. So.
I do like this way better than committing to three years and 300 and something thousand dollars. This gives us an idea to, does this work? Is this something that people will use? When we're talking, like, share a little bit more with how do you see this? Where where do you expect people to park? And what does that, what does this look like?
So and and to play sort of off of Mr. Parrish's point regarding people having to drive down, I totally understand from a a citizen standpoint, that that's a little bit different of a dynamic. But in terms of outside people, you know, bless you, residents and or not residents, but visitors, the really the whole point or the whole objective behind this is if we can create centralized parking spots, so it's it's no different than an Uber or or something where you're you're parking in these defined spots, so our, you know, city-owned parking lots, okay? There's an app, so whether you're in a parking lot or if you're on the street, you can still request a ride. So as long as you're within that geofence, you can request a ride off the app. But how I, especially from a visitor's standpoint, how I see it is, we have these defined areas and you can park here, you request a ride, and and from there, that's when they take you to the downtown area. Now, one of the great things about the app is it'll track, you know, where are the majority of people requesting rides? So we have the data behind that to sort of better gauge where our territory is. So that could be something that is beneficial, especially to the surrounding, the local area. But really, it's 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 as simple as an app, request a ride and and you just wait to to be picked up. But certainly, I I think that this is only, or it's it's most effective if we utilize these off-site parking areas, as that's the true reason behind it, is to reduce some of that traffic and and parking issues is by having these off-site spots.
From the restaurant perspective, are people, what, do we have any idea of what our different restaurants feel about this program? And does this take us to, could somebody then get a ride to Cobalt Station, which is in the city of Milford? Like, so it's a, you know, you could park at Riverside and take a golf cart to Cobalt or whatever?
So
What is our territory?
We create that ourselves.
Yeah. So so we can, we we can move that. And and there hasn't been a defined map at this point, so that's why it's hard for me to answer that question. I know that Hunter did respond in an email. I I've talked to him and he definitely expressed interest. I think it was more of a question based off of that email that was sent to the HMA. I think he showed support, but it was more of questions versus that of, you know, hey, we need to do this. I I think, you know, this this really isn't meant to be a leveraging standpoint, but, you know, we look at sort of the the recreation on the other side of the river. You know, I think that'd be nice to be able to utilize that. And if we have the proper amenities up there, to be able to shuttle people back and forth, you know, to the to the bike trail and and whatnot. So based off of, I I've only talked to Hunter in terms of the the restaurants. I know he was on board, but that's not to say everyone is and maybe maybe.
I think Hunter was the only person, and for those of you who don't know, Hunter Thomas owns 20 Bricks and Padreinos. I know you all know that. I think he was the only restaurant owner that responded, that I recall. And I guess my question is, I'm assuming that the geofence is limited to where it's legal to drive golf carts. Correct?
Previous administration and I had met with Geist. He suggested we start it kind of small and we can expand it out. So it might not cover even all of like our neighborhood or South Milford, but as we gauge the use, we could expand the fence.
Right, but the way it
It has to be a legal street to drive.
The boundaries, the maximum boundary is where the golf carts can legally drive currently.
Correct. And then I think it also goes
Cobalt Station, yes, because it's legal in terrace park.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Like, so it could, that's, it could extend even to
Christopher's point.
But not to 131.
Not to 131.
Yes.
Okay. I just, I mean, again, they're a little bigger and they're sort of enclosed, but I was assuming they fell under the same thing as golf carts.
Yeah, I don't know what the speed limit of the carts is.
Yeah.
So. If things would change, like the peak season, like I see, not June through August, like April or May through September, to me seems more of a peak season in my mind. But things like that or the parameters, would that change the price at all?
No, the only reason why it's it's drawn up like this is because they, it's a one-year contract and they can't start before June. That's the only reason.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
And and based off of the last meeting, we had discussed the holiday season, which is why December was added. So
Yeah, I do like that.
So it's sort of just being shifted due to timing.
And where would these, are these stored at our city garage?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought we
So in my mind, I was thinking, okay, if we got at least half the sponsorship money, like I would be comfortable with 60,000 to try it for a year because we've literally talked about this for like 10 years. Is there any way to, before we approve it, to get them to make a few phone calls for sponsorships or not?
You could make a contingent. My my cap would be 30,000, but contingent on them selling.
I also think that for 30,000, they're paying employees and the insurance, like, it's going to cost them money to do that.
That's not my problem.
Well, but
Yeah.
Yeah, pay for the service. If we're going to have the service, you have to pay for the service.
What I'm saying is, we're on the hook. They they say 90,000. What my point is, we would be on the hook for the 30. They have to raise the other 60
Correct.
to cover their cost.
Correct.
And I think that's, that would be my preference, that if we were going to do it, that we would agree to the 30. I I just, again, maybe we're splitting hairs, but I don't see the full value of it and I'm willing to try it, but at a very minimal outlaying for us.
Do that, do they have a program where they would take care of everything, like charge actually to where we, city would be, have nothing to do with it?
In terms of the maintenance or the the fees?
Fees and everything.
Well, right now, it's free, so there's no fees associated with this.
You mean for riders or you're talking about for
For the riders, so same, you know, we just give them permission, say, hey, yeah, we're okay with you coming in.
I don't
Charging for rides.
I don't know. I think
I think they don't want to charge.
Yeah.
Because then, because then, why wouldn't I just call an Uber instead of riding in a golf cart with a bunch of people I don't know, right? So I think, I I don't think that's necessarily a bad question, but if we're going to do this, let's try to set it up in a way as much as we can to succeed. And I think by charging a fee, people are just going to use the app they already have to get an Uber or a Lyft or whatever, right?
Yeah. Thought is, you could start with that, then possibly switch over to free, but yeah.
They're running the whole, they're they're hiring employees, they're managing the app, taking the phone calls and all that. I just think it too, if we don't, if we don't do it somewhat right, then it's going to fail. So like, we have to at least put, if we're going to do it, we have to put a little bit of money into it to see if it's going to work or not. Because it might fall out, but it might be a big success. I don't know.
But in my, I'm kind of, a little bit of money means 30,000, but 90,000, I think, is a lot to risk.
Well, I don't think there's an
With not exploring other things in parking like we talked about.
If we agree to cover the 90 regardless, what is the true incentive for them to spell sponsorships?
Look, man.
You know, I mean
Which was kind of my, if this is a business, it is a business.
Yeah.
I mean, really, it it almost should be, hey, we would like to run golf carts in the city of Milford and do we have your permission to go?
Right.
Go talk to all your businesses to get sponsorship. Sure, you have our permission.
Right.
And if it's a successful business, you will make lots of money. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Versus us subsidizing
True.
the the business. But I I think it's a good idea. I think it's just a matter of what what skin in the game do they have to make this successful?
Well, we could always counter it, see if they agree to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I
Again, I just think that if we have some parameter in there that, we we get it, it's 90,000. I I'm not disputing that that's the cost. But again, if we agree to pay the 90
What's the, right.
Yeah, what is their incentive to truly sell sponsorship when they want to? Yeah, what is their incentive to truly sell sponsorship when they want to, but, you know?
But they've got their money, I mean.
Yeah, what's the point?
I don't know that it's reasonable that, what is this, May 6th, that they can have this sixty thousand dollars worth of sponsorship sold by June 6th.
They, all they need in, in terms of, other than the twenty percent deposit, all of this will be paid over the six months. So if, if you're a business, you can spread your, your sponsorship over six months. So there is that ability, it doesn't have to be all by June 1st, just throwing that out there.
Why don't we see if they can do some preliminary sponsorship checks and see if people are, if businesses are willing to sponsor before we commit?
I'd feel better about that.
Great idea, get some feelers out there.
I mean, contact Chris Drucey, Jeff Wyler, some of the major businesses in town, and see what they're willing to do.
Does, does council have better guidance as to what that amount looks like? Is it, you know?
I would go up to fifty or sixty thousand, but.
I'm sorry, in terms of, hey, we're reaching out to see if businesses would be interested in sponsoring this. You know, we need, we need, on a preliminary basis, a, a commitment of twenty thousand or thirty thousand. Is there anything, is there any opinions related to that?
I would say asking for like ten would be the max that I would ask for, I mean, what you mean?
Uh, sorry, so if I say, hey, before we make a decision, we need commitments for, for sponsorship, so.
Equalling this amount, is that?
Well, not even the, I'm sorry, not even the actual businesses locally, I'm talking the, the guest golf carts. If, if we say, hey, before we make a decision, we want you, the company, to have X amount of dollars in sponsorship commitments. Is there any, any number?
What amount? To me, it would be at least thirty thousand.
Because that's fifty.
I would say thirty.
Thirty is, yeah, I mean, that's their proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so before I bring this back to council, we need commitments of thirty thousand dollars in sponsorships.
No, sixty, right?
I was thinking at least thirty in sponsorships.
If they've got the full year to come up with the whole sixty, if they come back to us and say, we've already got thirty in place. Are we okay with moving forward, assuming they're going to come up with the other thirty thousand over the course of the year?
For six months.
Truly, six months, yeah.
Six months, yeah.
And just as a person who's, I mean, I'm on Main Street a lot because I live close, and my business is there. What I would tell you is, from my perspective, the eleven o'clock hours make no sense. And the Sunday at seven is way later than I think it needs to be, personally. I mean, even for the restaurants, Padre No's is closed at ten, Twenty Bricks is closed at ten. There's, you know, besides Flamingo.
Maybe those hours could be adjusted, and like Thursday could be added, you know what I mean? Because Thursday's hopping.
Or earlier, I mean, where they start earlier. I just think the close, the, the end dates or end times are later than they, I would think they need to be.
Well, not only is it for downtown businesses, but I see it as also, if there's a resident that doesn't have access to transportation. They could potentially call one and go to Kroger if they need to get groceries. So if you backed it up a little bit earlier.
And I, and I hear you on the, the, the times, and, and that's where I think we'll be able to actively sort of adapt in terms of what is being requested, and, and we can adjust from there, so I hear you on that.
And that would be my question, that, that, once you sign the contract, these hours are flexible in the six months. They'll, they'll look at the data and go, okay, you guys don't need it here.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, and, and really, what that will be utilized for is, you know, really evaluating the, the, the program as a whole.
Right.
So, all righty.
Great.
A good discussion, everyone.
All righty, moving on. This is simply a discussion as well. Last meeting, we had discussed the, the idea of offering a parking solution specifically in a few areas of town for public parking. But we, we've had the issues of vehicles staying in one spot for, for a long period of time, causing issues in the downtown area. So we discussed that of a parking meter or paid parking type system. So I actually met with, a few days later, Park Pay USA to discuss some of our parking challenges. And I just wanted to give a, a brief update on this and sort of get better guidance from council. So Park Pay USA, basically, the, the, the overview or the summary is you scan a QR code, and they're going, they're going to be coming up with an app this month. But you scan a QR code, you've got different sections, spot number, and you would pay for parking that way. Now, for a city, there's zero cost to us to implement this. What Park Pay USA does is they, they collect a processing fee, which is, say, two, three percent. And then whatever we charge would be on top of that. So every day, they, they would collect the money through a third-party vendor. The third-party vendor separates the processing fee, and then our portion of the, the fees generated would then be sent to us on, I believe it's a forty-eight hour rotation or cycle. What I, what I really like about this company is, of course, it, it addresses some of our parking needs. And, and I provided the slides for the presentation, so everyone can look at it. But what it does is, it, it, I believe it's extremely beneficial for our local businesses, because there is a marketing component of this. So that goes in two different forms. If a local business is doing a marketing campaign, you can advertise on the, the web link or the app to show within that defined area, these are the businesses that are doing a, a marketing campaign. But also, what it allows for the local businesses to do is, when there is, say, ten minutes left on the parking, I, I'm parking and I've got ten minutes left, it'll send me a reminder. But then it'll also allow for a company to specifically target, say, downtown Milford. And it will send a marketing blurb at the bottom of it as well, so it's a ten percent off at the store today. So what it really allows us to do is not only address the parking issues, but also allows for our local businesses to directly market to people that are within that defined area. So instead of spending marketing dollars in other states, other countries, and so forth, this is a more direct marketing sort of vehicle that can be utilized. The other, and I, I throw this out there as an FYI, but this would be more of a policy thing that we'd have to determine. But they have the ability on the backend where, if I get a parking ticket, let's say it's ten dollars. I can have the ability to either pay the ten-dollar parking ticket, or I can go to a local business and spend ten dollars there, and that would exempt me from the parking ticket. So, once again, that is a policy thing, but I simply throw that out there as an FYI. But this is a, a company that I met with, I, I've met with other ones, my previous employer, and I, I've met with ones that have zero cost, but have a, you know, the same processing fee, but they don't have that marketing component. And, and I, I just really think that is a benefit to us. So this is me just presenting it, council can look at it and, and provide any feedback. But that is the one company, and if, if council says, hey, we like that, you know, can we maybe take next steps? Great, if, if you want me to look at other companies, there's bigger companies like Park Mobile, and I can certainly reach out to them as well.
Well, I know, being down in City of Loveland a lot, they have free parking out on the, and then the main, it is pretty darn effective. People still use it, and it, it started out as very passive, you know, they, they weren't out to ticket people. But it, it's accomplished what they had hoped it would do. The core, the one, the parking lot that's closest to a restaurant or a business or whatever, that turnover is definitely seen. So that if someone coming in at various times, they're still in the core. Now, if you want to go park for free down the road, you can still do that, and that, that's certainly an option. They have more parking than we do right now, but I, I've seen it work effectively, and they use a different company. And the, the only thing I, I would ask that we would consider, the one negative in the Loveland is, right now, it's by your smartphones only. It's by your, and there's no kiosks. And they've had a lot of people who either can't do this on their, or don't want to do it, or whatever. So that would be the only thing, that we also have a kiosk, so that if someone wants to pay right there, then you put a little thing in your, you know.
Yeah.
I believe there's still a facsimile of people that don't have a smartphone.
Yeah.
So, but again, that would, that would be the only thing that, that I would sort of, but I, I, we've talked about, again, to the mayor's point, about different things we've talked, we've, this is not the first time we've discussed this, and this is the furthest it's gone. So I would certainly encourage my colleagues that we move forward this sooner than later.
We're only talking to two parking lots, correct?
I mean, really, at this point, we haven't really defined anything, but I think that's what I've heard, based off the discussions I've had.
Right.
Do you, do you know how many parking spaces there are? Are there like forty-four, forty-five at the park?
You're not far off.
Pretty sure, and that's something we need to look at, once the building.
And we set our own rates, correct?
Yeah, we set our own rates.
You can even do demand rates, you can do.
Correct, I mean, if there's, there's events, you know, we can block it off on the app or online, so people know they can't park there. If we want to do special rates, you know, we can change the rates for the weekend, it's, it's very usable.
Yeah, I was just curious to the conversation about the guest carts. If we metered the lot, if that, if this company could say, well, given that you, I'm going to make it up, have eighty-seven parking spaces, we would expect it to raise this much money, which would help pay for the guest golf carts.
I think, I think they're a good match, because now we're telling people, okay, you come downtown, but we're going to charge you to park. But we're also saying, or you could park over here for free and get a ride.
Yeah.
So I think they kind of pair well together.
Yeah.
I would also think though, and I know this is just kind of a start down this, but if we're only planning on metering the lots and not the parking spots along Main Street, because right now, there's a four-hour limit, and I'd buy certain, I mean, certain businesses down there, I know that their owner keeps their car right out front for the whole business day, right? So I would encourage us also to explore maybe metering Main Street as well, because then that's also further encouragement of people to park at these further outlots and take the guest cart if we're going to pair them together. Otherwise, people are just going to take the spot on the street and sit there and hope they don't get a ticket for being there longer than four hours.
So how, how does the violation work, like the app, I assume?
Yeah, so it's, it's, the goal is to not give paper tickets. So that would be, it would be sent through the, your online portal or the app. So that would be an enforcement thing that we would have to, you know, try to collect and figure out if, if Mr. Thompson has five parking tickets. You know, what, how do we address that? So there, there is that side of things that we have to sort of figure out what we want to do policy-wise.
And I like the idea of being able to use it in the downtown business, because I think it takes the foul taste out of people's mouth when they're like, okay, well, I'm going to come back to this restaurant anyways, I don't care, right? I, I like that idea personally.
I, I like the idea, but the other thing that I just heard that made me think of something is, if they know they're going to get out of the ticket by spending the money at a business they're going to go to anyway, they're just going to say, forget it.
That was kind of my, my thought of, well.
So, I would, I would like to explore this.
If it could be set, to your point, if all of a sudden you realize that, you know, Kim Chamberlain leaves her car every day, she doesn't care. She's going to go to Forager every morning to get a coffee, she doesn't care, right? Where you could, it, it could be twice, or.
And not to put the chief on, so I, I've seen some systems in some cities that, once you get to a max, whatever, that four-hour max, it actually alerts the local traffic that there's a parking violation, that sends an alert.
Yeah, and, and there is that ability as well for the, for the police department to offer or write tickets for something like that. So you, you, you can do that both ways. It's just, there's, when you're writing, yeah, a paper ticket, of course, that's time and, and money. So obviously, the, the, the electronic version is the best, well, I, I shouldn't say the best route, but that's the preferred option amongst the people that they work with.
Does council want Mr. Gunderson to pursue this further?
I would say absolutely.
I would say yes.
Need some more information?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Excellent. All righty, moving on. I am seeking an ordinance, authoring a severance agreement and general release between the city of Milford and Patricia, Patricia Worland. I was our former finance director, and we, I'm, I'm seeking permission for a severance agreement and, and release.
Unless anybody has any questions, I would recommend that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the severance agreement and general release between the city of Milford, Ohio, and Patricia Worland.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Awesome, all right, back to positive things. Last thing is an ordinance approving the iWork Service Agreement contract. This is a software that I've used at the last two municipalities that I've been at, as it relates to nuisance properties and planning and zoning. Currently, we have a, a, a system in place that is rather time-consuming, and I, I don't believe is very efficient. Anytime we have to send out letters related to nuisance cases, we, we manually create those. And it's very time-consuming, it's, it's not as easy to track, I believe, as the software in iWork. So what iWork does is, we, we literally input the code, and when we create a, a case, you know, it populates the, the address with the, the property owner and the mailing address. And then, once you select the violation, it populates within a, a letter itself. We print it, sign it, and send it out. So it's, it's very efficient. And then from a planning and zoning side, we have the ability for people to, if they, they want to submit a, a fence permit, we would have the ability to put that online, they complete the form online, and then they could send it in through the software. And we could address it internally as well. So it would have the ability for people to fill all that out online, pay online, and, and it's, it's a very usable software. Once again, I've used it at the last two municipalities, I've had several people internally, including our nuisance inspector. Our police chief was there, we had our public works director and our, our new city planner on the call as well. And I received high regard for that. So what's great about this company is they've been in, in, in business for twenty-six years. And once they sign the original contract, they, they have yet to increase it on any of their customers. So what we sign it today, they've got twenty-six years' worth of history of keeping that same rate for whatever you sign with. So I'm asking council to approve that, as that's over my spending limit, and ROI is, saves us time and is more efficient, more effective.
I would recommend that the law director draft an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with iWork Systems Incorporated.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you, and I will say real quick on that, they were generous enough, because this will be my third municipality, to waive the setup costs of sixty-seven hundred, so I'm very grateful for that, so throwing that out there.
Awesome.
The other thing on that is, I would encourage our staff to look at updating or implementing the Property Maintenance Code, the International Property Maintenance Code. We've talked about this for years, but now that we have a new nuisance inspector, it just, it cleans up a lot of discrepancies that we have in our ordinances right now, and the property main code actually has a lot of teeth, too. And so, by utilizing this software, and I'm pretty sure that the software would have that access, so that, you know, you write a, a grass complaint or whatever, it's already populated in there. So again, it, it's just one more streamlining of our system. So I would certainly look at us adopting the most current version of the Property Maintenance Code, so that we could allow our inspector to have enhanced enforcement.
Okay.
There's such.
All right, make a motion, will someone like to make a motion to adjourn from the committee of the whole?
I would like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to new business.
Ms. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to, in accordance with Section 3.051 of the Milford City Charter, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual, unless the public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual requests a public hearing.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Hey, we will be returning to read ordinance sentences and resolutions. If you're here and need something signed, so you can go, okay, you can do that. Do we do this to ordinancees first?
Yeah, let's do that. Yeah, let's do that. So, since we entered, we'll have to exit, and then we'll go back through the ordinances, and then we'll enter again.
Okay, change of plans. We will stay, we'll read the ordinances and resolutions, and then we will go into executive session, so. So a motion to stay in regular session?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Alright, keeping everyone on their toes. Sorry, Law Director.
Right?
Okay.
Uh, in the absence of our hilarious Law Director, I get the privilege of reading the ordinances tonight, so buckle up, everybody. First up, Ordinance twenty-five dash three five three, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with McGowan governmental underwriters for property and casualty insurance for the City of Milford. Now therefore be it ordained by the city, or by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio. Section one, the council of the City of Milford hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into and execute an agreement with McGowan governmental underwriters for property and casualty insurance for the City of Milford from May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five to May thirteenth, twenty twenty-six, for one hundred and two thousand ninety-seven dollars. The terms and conditions of the agreement are incorporated herein by reference pursuant to, in accordance with Section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter. Section two, pursuant to, in accordance with Sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to spend the rules and read by title only?
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Uh, Ordinance number twenty-five dash three five three, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with McGowan governmental underwriters for property and casualty insurance for the City of Milford.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, Ordinance number two five dash three five four, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with ROI technologies to provide IT consultant services to the city. Now, now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio. Section one, city council hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into a contract with ROI technologies to render IT consultant services to the city at the rate set forth in the scope of services attached as Exhibit A to the contract. Uh, the attached contract is fully incorporated by reference under, and in accordance with Section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter. Section two, under and in accordance with Sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to spend the rules and read by title only?
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ordinance number two five dash three five four, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to contract with ROI technologies to provide IT consultant services to the city.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ordinance number two five dash three five five, an ordinance authorizing a severance agreement and general release between the City of Milford, Ohio, and Patricia Worland. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio. Section one, the council of the City of Milford, Ohio hereby authorizes the city manager to execute a severance agreement and general release with Patricia Worland. The terms and conditions of said agreement are hereby incorporated herein by reference in their entirety pursuant to, in accordance with Section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter. Section two, under and in accordance with Sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to spend the rules and read by title only?
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number two five dash three five five, an ordinance authorizing a severance agreement with, and general release between the City of Milford, Ohio, and Patricia Worland.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Alright, Ordinance two five dash three five seven, an ordinance authorizing a severance agreement with iWork Systems Incorporated. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the municipality of Milford, Ohio. Section one, the council of the City of Milford, Ohio hereby authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement with iWork Systems, Inc., uh, for applications and services for an annual fee of ten thousand dollars. The terms and conditions of said agreement are hereby incorporated herein by reference in their entirety pursuant to, in accordance with Section twelve point oh three of the Milford City Charter. Section two, under and in accordance with Sections twelve point oh five and twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by city council.
Motion to spend the rules and read by title only?
Second.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number two five dash three five seven, an ordinance authorizing a severance agreement with iWork Systems Incorporated.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Alright, on to resolutions. Resolution number twenty-two five dash six six three, a resolution to approve the final Hamilton County nine-one-one plan pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter one twenty-eight. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Milford, Ohio. Whereas the state of Ohio has enacted legislation under Ohio Revised Code, Chapter one twenty-eight, governing the establishment and operation of enhanced nine-one-one, E-nine-one-one systems, and requires counties to develop and maintain a comprehensive countywide final plan for public safety answering point, known as a PSAP services, and, whereas Hamilton County has completed the development of its final nine-one-one plan in accordance with the requirements of Ohio Revised Code one twenty-eight point oh three and O R C one twenty-eight point oh six, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners, Commissioners of Hamilton County formally approved the final nine-one-one plan on April tenth, twenty twenty-five, following the procedures set forth in Chapter one twenty-eight of Ohio Revised Code, and, whereas this legislative body, having reviewed the final nine-one-one plan and finding the plan supports the continued enhancement of nine-one-one service delivery within the county, desires to approve the plan as required under O R C one twenty-eight point oh three and relative provisions. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Milford, Hamilton County, Ohio, that Section one, the City of Milford Council hereby approves the final Hamilton County nine-one-one plan as adopted by Hamilton County Board of Commissioners on April tenth, twenty twenty-five, and authorizes its submission to the appropriate county and state authorities as evidence of the jurisdiction's approval pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Chapter one twenty-eight, Section two. The clerk of this city is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the Hamilton County nine-one-one planning committee for inclusion in the record of jurisdictional approvals. Section three, this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest period allowed by law as provided in Section twelve point oh seven of the Milford City Charter.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Resolution twenty-two five dash six six four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply to the Ohio Department of Development for grants from the fiscal year twenty twenty-five Housing Technical Assistance Program. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the City of Milford, Ohio. Section one, that the city manager be and hereby is authorized to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Development